Why they're running and we're going to start with Andy and then move on down the road to Pat, Camille and Celeste. Andy Pejuba has elected not to come tonight.
Oh, I know.
Start Andy if you'd like, please. Oh, I forgot to tell you guys this and it was significantly important. Matt is our timekeeper. He's right here and he'll give you numerous 30 seconds. 15, 0, so he'll help keep you on track. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight and I'm privileged to have a chance to speak to everybody. I'm Andy Yan running, writing in for seat A. Different year this year with our campaign. I've been in Canav about 30 years, primarily a small business owner scenario since the early days. Started in the mechanic when I first moved here with brandsies and then moved on through law enforcement. Spent a few years with the Canav PD and then moved on to the King County Sheriff's Office. Wonderful jobs, enjoyed it all and then got involved with a good friend. We started doing internet stuff 20 some years ago. We started the old dial-up back in the first days and went on through fiber. You know, did all the different builds wireless for decades. And really had a good time rolling out high-speed internet in the area. What a blast and what a privilege. Eventually South Central Communications. On South we sold that company to them. I worked for South Central for a few years during that transition. And I had a great time there and met a lot of neat people. And I've kind of been wandering a little since as far as work goes. Been a commissioner since the end of my first term, four years. I generally enjoy the job. I love meeting people and I've done most of the legislative work with this county. I enjoy spending time during the session, you know, on Capitol Hill. And my focus has been land use primarily. That's been my biggest, that and fiscal control. When we started, we were having some financial issues and we had to wring that in. And we're in great shape fiscally now and we just need to stay after on land use. Thanks.
And Pat is next. Thank you.
And so I'm Pat, I'm Pat, Pat O'Leary. First of all, I want to thank the Sun, Sunday Times News and the Chamber of Commons for giving us an opportunity to come talk to you folks and for you to come talk to us and find out what you need and what you wish for and how we can help. So it's a really great part of that. I've served this county.
Hey, Pat, pick the microphone up just a little bit closer so the folks on the livestream can hear you good.
I've served this county for 20 years as an emergency medical provider, a fireman and a fire chief. My employment with the National Parks Service lasted over 43 years. My life has been dedicated to helping others. At times serving as a fire chief gave me some key insights on how the government operates. I have no business interest in King County, none. I'm not beholden to anyone but my family and you if you choose to elect me. And then I'm going to serve you just the way I did my employers for the last 43 years with the best of my ability and all of my energy. And I'll be available for you to get ahold of me when you want to and when you need to. I'm going to do all that's possible that a commissioner can do to protect the rights of existing property owners, to make sure that the questions on you are compatible with what the people here want and within the law. I'm going to protect our water. We need to protect our water. It's one of the main things. What I'm offering you folks today, the folks in the county, is an honest and fresh approach to county government. I hope you share with me my vision for our county. I want to take care of its citizens. I want to take care of our water. I want to protect our way of life and our future picture for King County. Thank you.
Pat is running for seat B as is Celeste. And Camille is next and she's a writing candidate.
Perfect. Thank you, Mary Beth, and thank you all for coming. Likewise, I appreciate the Chamber and Sunday Times News doing this. This is my first rowing this round. Pat's a little more prepared than me. I tend to just kind of speak from my gut and heart. I'm Camille Johnson Taylor. I'm currently the Tourism Director for King County Office of Tourism. I've been there for eight years. Six of those years I've been the director. And I really had a front row seat to the different iterations of commissions through the years. And I've been able to see their successes and in some cases maybe failures or things that didn't go so great. And I learned a lot during that time. And during the time as Tourism Director, it's such a big piece to the county, the biggest economic piece for outside taxes. It's so intertwined in county business. And I realized that running for commissioner was probably in my cards at some point. And I've been kind of sensitive to that timing. And in January, I did consider running for a commissioner and I came out with my brain trust, which is my family. The Johnsons are a pretty close clan. Four generations in this room right now, by the way, my mom, myself, my daughter and my one-month-old granddaughter. So deep roots, yeah. But that was the brain trust and we all kind of felt like after kind of multiple discussions, it was the right thing, just not the right time. So in my mind, I thought, all right, I've got to have four years before I have to think about this again. But after the convention, it went one way and then the primaries went a totally different direction and I felt quite alarmed by that. And I knew a write-in was an option because my grandpa won as a writing commission candidate in the 80s. And so I was thinking, oh, who could we get to write in? And then I literally had this moment, oh crap, it's me. So, but the thing is, I do feel right about it. And when you feel right about something, you can do anything. And I feel passionate about King County. I've given my heart and soul to tourism and now I'd like to apply that in a broader way. I'm a write-in candidate, so you will have to write my name on the ballot under Commissioner CP. Camille Johnson, thank you so much.
Thank you. And Celeste is running for seat B and you're on.
All right. Thank you for having me. If by chance we haven't already met, my name is Celeste Myers and I'm running for King County Commission CP. I grew up mostly in Montana and have lived in King County for the better part of my adult life. Thank you for welcoming me into the community 17 years ago. Canav is now the lifelong home of my husband Nicholas and I and our family-run, hands-on businesses. I'm grateful to have been able to come serve you publicly in these past six years. And because I was concerned with Canav moving away from its small-town feel, I volunteered for Canav City Planning and zoning in 2016 and later became the Chair. In 2018, I moved to Canav City Council, where I continue to advocate for diversification of industry, ranching, farming and other land use rights, as well as prioritizing essential infrastructure and holding developers accountable while still allowing for thoughtful growth. In 2019, I was asked to be the county-wide coordinator for the successful food tax reform referendum with all of us working together. King came first in the state on this bipartisan effort. I've been Republican for as long as I can remember, including since settling here. In 2021, I was chosen to represent King County as the party chair, where I work closely with our neighboring counties and meet quarterly with legislators around the state. I was the only commission candidate to voluntarily rely solely on our caucus convention selection process. And I was vetted by locally elected delegates and went on to win the majority vote in the primary. That's how I earned a place on the upcoming ballot. I'm looking to put my connections, experience and knowledge to work as a county commissioner. I'm uniquely positioned to advocate and leverage for our King County concerns. And I look forward to discussing the key issues with you tonight.
Thank you. Next, we're going to have our Q and A questions with the commissioner candidates. And I just want to remind you all that there's a timekeeper, Matt, monitoring time limits. I think these questions are two-minute answers. And as you can see, we have a 30-second and a 15-second in this zero clock. Good timing, this lasts. So we're going to start with Andy for the first question and then we're going to work our way down the table. So then the second question will be Pat and he'll start that one. So our first question here tonight, and then the other thing I wanted to tell you in case you're interested in the timeline, we're going to go till 7:55 with these questions unless we run out of them. Tell us your public service experience, please, Andy. Your formal education and employment experience that makes you qualified to serve as a successful King County Commissioner. I'd be redundant, but.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I've served in quite a few different positions through the years and primarily in business. I've served on different boards, Board of Directors. I started with Garkane, it was probably my first kind of public service position 15 years ago. I now serve on the Desred Power Board of Directors, which is the company that owns five of the local Utah electric cooperatives. So we provide power to most all of rural Utah through that company. I've learned a lot about management and the experience. You know, I really enjoyed working with the guys. And we have a power plant out in Vernal and a mine in Colorado that we operate. Lots of experience there. Self-employment, you know, I've had a lot of different businesses, but I think I've learned a lot. I spent four years in the commission. That has been a very high-opening experience. And that's the reason I'm here today is that I started under the Trump administration and life was easier for our local interests. And it gave me a chance to have a couple of years to kind of get my feet under me. And we've had a change in the administration and things have changed dramatically since then. And we know what, so we've had to re-line ourselves, take a new tack. I've got been involved in Monument, the Monument Advisory Committee, which was a federal appointment three years ago. And I've been serving on that board for... We've just really got that role as the new Monument problems are changing. You know, they're looking to completely close that land to all uses but science. And I just can't emphasize enough how important we think it is to stay after those issues. And I better wrap up on time, but land use, road access, I've got that experience. I'm serving in those capacities now. I think it's important that I finish some of those.
Thank you. Pat, tell us about your public service experience, please. Your formal education and employment experience that makes you qualified to serve as a successful King County Commissioner.
Okay, they don't just stop, right? But I have answers for you. I grew up at the Grand Canyon. I went to high school at the Grand Canyon, grade school at the Grand Canyon. Played football and basketball with a bunch of people you may know from Dorney Back when wheels were square. After that, I attended Scottsdale Community College. I mostly stayed in the business end of things. But I was able to go to work for the National Parks Service when I was 17 years old. I worked my way through the National Parks Service. Worked the Grand Canyon, on the Northwoods, and two winters up there by my lonesome. Only human being there. Worked the summers there, related with this county. Been around here for most of my life, northern Arizona, southern Utah. Biggest part of my Parks Service career was 28 years of being the diver at Glen Canyon. You know, and most anything I did, what I'm about to tell you about is the first time I did it, right? But I always became pretty good at it. I developed the best dive team, public safety dive team in the United States of America and trained FBI and how to find things underwater. Never left anybody in the Monument Lake Powell in 28 years because I was determined and I figured out logical ways to get things done. The last four years I was there, I managed the facilities at Glen Canyon National Recreation Area. National Park is much like a county government. It has many facets. There are several divisions, there are different money sources with restrictions and conditions for their use. Base funds allotted to Congress that go down to Interior Department, those sorts of things. I managed millions of dollars of projects, solar projects, turning the park 88% renewable energy. And I was able to reduce the $115 million deferred maintenance of Glen Canyon National Park by 60%.
Camille, do you want me to repeat that or?
No, no, that's okay. I like that we clap every answer, like you survived another one. Good job, Beth. Education, so graduated from Canav High School and I was pretty smart at that point. One of my teachers was here. He did a great job. But then I went on to SUV in Cedar City and then I moved up to Ogden and finished at Weaver State University. And I graduated in communications with an emphasis in broadcast journalism and business administration. And I thought I wanted to be a TV journalist. And I started out working for both KSL Radio and KSL TV. And then I realized it was kind of terrible. You were involved in the worst five minutes of people's lives on a regular basis. And I didn't really want to develop the thick skin that it took to be a reporter and be stoic on camera. I subsequently went into finance and real estate. So that's been tremendously valuable experience my whole life, personally and in business. And then after that, I ended up moving to Canav and got recruited by the then Tourism Director to work in this capacity for tourism. I had a marketing background as well. I was naturally passionate about King County. I was always bragging about it. So I got recruited into tourism. And since I've been Tourism Director, we've seen 200 new tourism-related jobs. I've increased the revenue 273% from just under $2 million to $5.2 million. We've leveraged for ground money to $1.5 million to get $4.5 million. So I know how to grow revenues, get grounds. And then service-wise, currently I am on Utah Tourism Industry Association Board of Directors. I serve for the County Economic Development Committee. I'm on the beautification board. I've served on a lot of different boards and associations in finance and real estate in the past as well. So it's definitely part of my background and actually part of our family heritage is just being very service-oriented. And so I do want to serve in this capacity. And real quick, I'll say this, this is a sacrifice for me. I'm leaving a good career, getting paid. This is a pay cut and a huge sacrifice. So this will be a service for me, but I feel like I can do great things for King County.
Thank you, Camille. Now we're going to start with you. And can you please tell us what motivated you to run for office at this time?
Celeste.
Oh, I forgot, Celeste. My God. Sorry. I apologize. I'll say a prayer for you tonight. Me too. Sorry. Celeste, you're on.
Hey, could you give me that question again?
Sure, certainly. I think I'm on one, aren't I? Tell us, no, tell us what mot... No. I'm on the first question for... Yes, okay, thank you. Tell us about your public service experience, your formal education and employment experience that makes you qualified to serve as a successful King County Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize.
No problem. So my husband and I own two businesses together. We own a bed and breakfast that he manages completely so I can do political stuff. And then I'm also a nutter for a living. So that's a business that I can control how busy I am or not so I can focus completely on the work of being a politician if I need to. I did talk in my intro a little bit about what I've done as far as being on city planning as the Chair, the county-wide coordinator for the food tax referendum, the party chair for the county. And I serve on city council for the past four-plus years. I love that. That's a legislative position. So we handle budgets, we handle ordinances and contracts, things like that. The difference between what a county commissioner would do and a city councilperson is county commissioners legislative and also a little bit executive. They work more with the legislature of Salt Lake City and even with the federal delegation. So it's a great fit for the experience I have working with our neighboring counties and also with legislators around the area. I'm quite close with Phil Lyman, our representative in Congress, in Utah Congress. And public service, I love serving. It makes me so happy. And I usually donate the stipend that I get on city council to local interests like King County Care and Share, the Police Department, things like that. Before coming here, I lived in Oregon and I was the Vice President of a statewide nonprofit organization. I loved that. After coming here, I served as the Secretary of the Chamber until I had to move on to city planning. And that's all for now. I think I'm getting the zero, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Celeste. So now we're starting with Pat and the question is, tell us what motivated you to run for office at this time? And then we'll go to Camille and Celeste and back up to Andy. Tell us what motivated you to run for office at this time, please.
So living 20 years plus in Big Water, Utah, rural, where how the outline areas feel, where the tax money goes and what the return on investment is. That was one of the points that was in my head. The smaller communities weren't getting back an equitable amount of their tax dollar. Also personally, I was affected, like many of you are, by zoning changes, SITLA lands being sold and developed in my backyard. Nobody wants 450 RV spots in your backyard. Nobody wants to add land on the side of your house to be turned into multi-unit housing and on and on. That was another big thing. Also, I had a real strong desire to look out for the public well-being. And, you know, COVID, I wasn't a real fan of how the county handled the COVID response. And I was a bit outspoken about it. And I think that, you know, if somebody's pouring poison in your water supply, the county official has a responsibility to tell the citizens about it. And so those are the main things that motivated me. And then, you know, we start finding out that a lot of our tax money is going to subsidize people who want to start their own businesses or developments. And that didn't seem fair, but we needed solid money for ourselves here in the county. We weren't addressing the needs of our county. We don't have mental health facilities for a county. We drive mentally ill patients all the way to Provo or St. George and they beat the ambulance home. Those are all kinds of things in my head wrapped around the well-being of our county. And then most importantly, water. I live at Lake Powell. I see it. I see the cedar trees dying and we're not taking care of our water. And we have to take care of our water for us and for our future.
Thank you, Pat. Camille, would you like me to repeat that or are you all right?
No, no, I'm all right. Why I'm running? So I talked a little bit about that, kind of feeling compelled to run, but some things that are important to me. So I have grown tourism and I know tourism is kind of a love-hate relationship. It's our main industry. It's our economy here in King County. But sometimes we feel encroached on. And I think a few things I've seen happen where it's been my job as a Tourism Director to put heads in bets and I've done that. But there's also been some things that are outside of my lane and I'm a toothless tiger on. And yeah, I do try to get blind for it, but I would like to shake that and help that. And I simply can't do that in the tourism space. And what I mean by that is, for example, the vacation rentals. I see the numbers and I'm watching that explode. And it's such a huge number of our residences right now or would-be long-term residents. And I do feel concerned about that. And I feel protective of the essence of our communities. And I feel like there's certain things that will erode the essence of our communities and the county. So I do feel a little bit alarmed about the changes that we've seen there and then also growth. I'm like you guys. If I could take a snapshot in time and freeze this, that would be nice. But we want to be a small town, not a dead town. Growth is essential. And so I'd like to see development that is meaningful for locals and preserving our heritage and local-leaning development. I don't think we have to whore ourselves out so a developer can make money. I think we really need to protect our communities as we grow. And then public lands, that's a space that I've been able to work in with tourism and I've been able to work quite well with our public lands administrators. And it impacts us so much when over 90% of the county is public lands. And I see that we have some pretty stiff battles ahead on that front. And I feel like I could be a warrior in that space.
Thank you. Celeste, do you want me to repeat it or are you all right?
Why I'm running?
Running?
Yes. All right. Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So our county has a very large geographical area. And as Camille mentioned, over 90% is owned by the federal government and another chunk owned by the state government. And so our communities are threaded along our highways mainly. And every single one of those communities is really diverse and different with unique culture and heritage. And I think it's so important to honor the different aspects of our county. Not only are we spread out from each other, but we're at different elevations. We've got different terrain, different industries that can thrive in each area. And I wanted to really honor that. I've been working for years to form relationships with people all over the county on a deep level. And that's why there's now a sense of trust, a sense of communication. I've been putting my phone number out there for six-plus years. And because of that, I've been really grateful to understand people, enjoy people, be embraced by people all over the county. And I appreciate that so much. To hear that I won the primary in Alton by just huge numbers makes me feel good because Alton's one of our farthest away from Canav communities. And Big Water, connect deeply with Big Water. I think it's so important to diversify our economy, not only just trying to find things that aren't tourism, but also to diversify within the tourism industry as well. And it's also important when we're talking about all these different areas to give different areas a little bit more authority and say over what their lives and livelihoods look like. And I want to make sure to honor that. I'd like to build on the infrastructure, including roads, that the current commission has already put in place. Thank you. I'm getting a zero again.
Okay, this is our third question and this is... Did I forget Andy? Oh, I'm sorry. I can't get into this swing. Sorry, sir. I apologize to you too. And don't forget Pat and Camille will be next, obviously.
Not necessary. We'll get everybody in at some point, right? Why I run, I'm running primarily on issues that I'm passionate about. I have spent a lot of time working on things like land management and roads, like I mentioned. We've got some really important decisions to be made here. By the end of 2024, our lives may all be completely different than we want, than what we know now. With fighting Monument proclamation, that removed all prior land management that we've been working on for 20 years, basically an void. We just finished the second management plan just a couple of years ago. And that's all behind us. So all the time we spent defending access is over. So we're starting with this new plan. And what took us almost five to seven years last time for a management plan is going to be done in less than a year, next year. Five or six-year plan will be done whether we like it or not, whether we can comment. Process will be done. You know, obviously we don't intend to come and they're going to have this stuff done. So... So we're scrambling. And a couple of the things that were specifically excluded on his interim management plan, and I'll just tell you what's excluded rather than what he allowed. It specifically excludes walking, hiking, biking, camping, obviously any motorized use. So any event you can think of that we do, those are not allowed under the interim management plan currently under the Biden administration. And I could go all night. Grazing is a guaranteed right that we had given us by President Biden when he instituted, when he created the monument. It's in law, the Taylor Grazing Act, and it's now removed by interim management. So I need to continue to work on these things that I'm currently working on. I can't imagine getting with Earl.
Thank you.
I can't imagine resetting our Republican seat at this point with all these important things going on and not having any background as we move forward.
Thank you. Everyone has spoken, right? For that, okay. Give us an overview, so I'm starting with?
Camille.
Who? Camille, right? Really quick to volunteer me, Pat. Yes, he was. I ask that we all behave. Give us an overview of your specific plans to diversify and support the Kane County economy, please. You're on.
You know, I put on my document over there to facilitate economic diversification. I've actually looked into other counties and how they do the positions for economic development. And I'm not sure I'm convinced on that yet, but it sounds kind of like the government trying to get people to come here and do what you should be attracted to do here with a private industry free market. But I think the thing that we can do is, you know, Celeste touched on diversifying the tourism economy. And there are things that we aren't capturing money on that we could do better right now. I know that there's Main Street grants that they do from the state. Collette's down in the audience and man, her predecessor was a big proponent of those grants. And basically kind of beautifying your downtown, making it more walkable, extending the opportunities that you have there so that you're increasing the spending opportunities from the visitors in the area. As a tourism director, I've actually seen where there's a lot of opportunity for locals to capture or create new businesses. And so really kind of working to that end. And I've had some crazy ideas and maybe I'll just throw them out there because, you know, why not? I thought it'd be fun to kind of do like a shark tank, you know, where we have some investors who want to see locals invest in the local economy. And so if somebody brings an idea, I want to have wagon rides and Dutch oven dinners, you know, they can kind of present it to these investors and get maybe a part of money to do that. There really is a lot of opportunity in that. And then beyond that, you know, I don't think we could handle a big employer coming to the area. One, we have shortage on housing. We have a shortage with the workforce. And so maybe more of these ones-e-twos, these type of companies. And how can we facilitate them coming to the area? Or even, we now have the Zoom boom. We have hybrid at every home and we can attract really highly educated people to come to the area and kind of increase the services that we have in our own area. So there we go.
Thank you. Give us an overview of your specific plans to diversify and support the Kane County economy. Celeste, thank you.
Yeah, so please allow me to explain the dynamic that we're under right now. As I mentioned, 94% of the county is not up for private ownership. And so we're left with 6%. And what do we do with that 6% that we've got left? Well, what we're locked into now is tourism being our main economy. The transient room tax is funneled. The state legislature decides how that money gets spent. They've currently said for this year anyway, that 47% of the tourism tax has to be spent on marketing to bring more tourism here. And what that ends up doing is it blocks us into growing tourism and it becomes this cycle of a circuit eating its tail. And so how can we get away from that cycle where we're locked into it? Is maybe we advocate to the Utah legislature, which sets these parameters, to allow us to have more decision, more agency over how the money that our area and our workers spend. So maybe we don't have to spend 47% on bringing more tourists. And by the way, a good portion of that 47% has to be spent outside the area. So we don't even, we couldn't all just become marketers and make posters. Do you see what I'm saying? And so what I would like to see is to allow people to have sovereignty over what they do for a living. So they can decide what they want to bring here, rather than the government deciding what people want to do for a living. But the people get to decide what they do for a living. And then the government's job is to facilitate, to help mitigate impacts, but to also get out of the way and allow industry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a chance to debate a little bit as it said in the email?
Pardon me?
Is there a chance to correct a couple of things?
For a minute, yeah.
Where?
For a minute, yeah.
For a minute? Okay, yes.
I just kind of wanted to clarify a little bit.
Well, just wait, wait, wait. Let's, let's...
I have said yes.
We've allowed it before.
Yeah, sure.
So it's the president of the chamber that's speaking?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So 47%, it's actually not dedicated to just marketing. It's actually called establishing and promoting, which does not just go to marketing. That actually covers our operational costs as well. And there's nothing in the state statute that requires it to be spent out of state. That's actually what we go apply for co-op grants through the state. But most of that is required to be spent out of state. But there's nothing in the statute of the 47%, so I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Andy, you're next. Would you like me to repeat the question again?
Yeah.
Okay. Give us an overview of your specific plans to diversify and support the Kane County economy.
Hey, I'm going to take a little different path. I've tried diversifying the economy with different jobs and got crucified by the left. They, it's hard to tackle those challenges that are anything except tourism. We love tourism. We need to embrace it, keep it alive. I support, you know, extraction, uranium, sand, you know, whatever it is, if it can be done responsibly. We create a lot of jobs. And, but I don't see most of those ever passing muster with the diverse group we have here now. My focus is going to be on protecting what we've got. If we continue down the trail that we're on with this current administration, we won't have any jobs because we're not going to be allowed to access the land. We're not going to be allowed to graze cattle. The heritage, the family scenario that we have in the past, that's toast. So my immediate focus is how can we save just a little bit of what we currently have? Because it's going to change fast. So we've got to protect what we've got before we can grow much. We just need to do it wisely and slowly on the road. I don't think with our location, commercial, you know, industry is going to really find us to be the best spot without interstate, without large air. You know, we're not going to bring the big guys in, are we? So we've got to bring small industry if we're going to diversify. I'm a complete fan of diversification. We don't want everything under one, you know, tourism tent, but we have to take care of that now. That's what we have. And if we aren't careful, we'll even lose the majority of that. And we've got to protect our folks that are doing some of the new things, tourism, ATV tours, and all revenue that's generated by that. We've got to work to save what we've got.
Thank you, Andy. Pat? Would you like me to repeat it for you, sir?
No, I got it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So what I don't think anybody's really talking about is that we're actively promoting the expansion of our population and we're gentrifying our youth and our families out of the county. So there's nothing here for our youth to say for. We need well-paying jobs, jobs that a person could have and afford a home, which typically unless you're in management, the tourism industry does not apply, does not offer. So we got to find a way to do that. Diversification, of course. You know, just down the road, there was a community college, a very low-respected community college. We don't have that. We don't have a vocational school. There's no reason for our youth to stay here. Extraction, mining. Look, we live between five national borders. They promote theirselves. They promote theirselves. We can cash in on that and we have. Now, I agree with Celeste. We need to go and talk to those people who say, how do we use those TRT funds? And change those rules. It's a heavy lift. I'm up for it. Change those rules. Let's get industry in here that does not damage the sole reason people want to come in here in the first place. We like to take pictures of this. Let's take it up. We don't need to do that. We can find better ways. It doesn't have to be big smoke stacks. It doesn't have to be giant manufacturing, but there's ways. We'll seek them out. I'll seek them out. And if we have to offer incentives, maybe that's a way that we can apply tax increment financing. That would be a project that we need.
Thank you.
Time to, because I'd like to address a couple of things Pat said as well.
Wait, wait.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
You got it. So you mentioned tourism jobs are high-paying jobs, but there's something that people kind of tend to overlook. As we have more visitors here, we need more power. We need more self-sensual. We need more doctors and nurses. And so actually 30% of the found and sustaining jobs are also a direct result because of tourism population. So those are found and sustaining jobs.
Thank you. We're on to probably our final question because we have to wrap up soon. And I received a campaign postcard in the mail that stated Kane County is giving $97 million to rich developers in the Eastside area. And we are on, Celeste starts this question. Can you explain this claim to voters? I received a campaign postcard in the mail that stated Kane County is giving $97 million to rich developers in the Eastside area. Can you explain this claim to voters? Thank you.
Yes, so I believe that was in reference to the Eastside project. And that project is a TIF, which is Tax Incremental Funding. It's what TIF basically is, super high view. A local area, it's a state program to provide a particular area with tax deferment so that they can funnel that money back into that particular area. And I believe the $97 million was in reference to how much that project might generate over time and go back into the area rather than going straight to taxes. So I'm in favor of this project and other projects like that because they are locally driven. The area that's impacted and in a positive way gets to decide whether or not they have that project happen. So this is just one tool that the state government allows people to implement. And I believe there's another project being considered, East County, for a solar farm that the Church Wells and Korea people and Big Water people get to decide whether or not they think that's a good project for them.
Thank you. Andy, you're next. Would you like me to repeat it or are you all right?
No, I got that one. This is the, throw the pitch out there, right? This is the biggest wide spin shirt in Kane County in the 30 years that I've lived here. And to put it in writing, I mean, the golf, it just blows my mind. How is it that stupid? You know? You know? It's amazing. I didn't think about you. I didn't think about you.
It's my mailer. Wasn't it a nice mailer?
I was, well, there's several letters have it on it. So people, and at first through the primary, I didn't say anything. I was going to stay above the fray and a lot of other stuff. This is what I'm talking about before Pat was even part of this. And it just kept getting worse and crazier and crazier. And I was, I was amazed. Here's just a quick rundown that Rob put together for us as he was looking at some of the money that goes in Eastside. If you don't live in the boundaries of the development area of Eastside, this in no way affects, I've tried to share this with Sky and kind of get related to Pat, and they just come back with just complete fictitious results here. If you don't live inside that development area, this does not touch your taxes. Period. Zero. No effect. And I don't speak generalizations or maybes or what is. This is fact. You can look at the numbers that have been built on this program from day one. If you live in this CRA area and you want to vote or raise heck, let's hear it. Those people have voted 90% to support this project. It raises a ton of revenue. Here's some of the numbers that will come out of that. And this is post-performance. So if they don't get their projects up and running with their $150 million of private capital, these mysterious developers that I read on the signs that are before the family or whatever, I'd love to know who some of these developers are. I've never heard their name or, you know, they're buying us off.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Pat, would you like me to repeat the question?
I didn't hear you.
I think I can answer that. I agree.
Thank you.
Community Reinvestment Act is designed for, to reinvest in areas that are blighted in our country. The, in the national parties, the federal government, we spend money. What is given to us is for this purpose. And that money has to be spent for that purpose. Eastside is raw land, pretty much. Doesn't need reinvestment. It's an investment. The way I understand it, you're running research and Andy's right, you know? It's not going to cost them any more money up there. But for the length of that term, that investment will not pay taxes to this county. And you can end up holding the bag on that. So that is a handout. Don't let people spin you, you know? I've been doing, I'm in this for you. I refrain from calling people stupid and hateful. That was a really nice neighbor, I got to tell you. You know, we got to take care of what we need. The people in Vermillion Cliff, they paid a big bunch of money to have the roads. I owe lots there when that happened. I paid that. But are the roads maintained? No. We need to take care of what we have now before we start building things we can no longer take care of. Okay? We have to grow with that. And we have to make sure we have the water and the resources to do it. So if a person comes into Canav and wants to start a bookstore, we're going to give them money for the shelves? I don't think so.
Thank you.
We all need Jesus.
We have Jesus. Just read out.
Mary Ann, will you read that for us?
Certainly. I received a campaign postcard in the mail that stated Kane County is giving $97 million to rich developers in the Eastside area. Can you please explain this claim to the voters? I didn't really get that postcard.
Yeah, I crock crap. There is no money going to rich developers. If so, I'm up for adoption. If so, I'm up for adoption. But really, I mean, I've watched the numbers, I've been involved in these meetings for years since I've been the tourism director, this goes back to Dirt Places, there's no money going to rich developers. It's just, it blows my mind. I'm getting a little fired up thinking about this. Some of the Claus family, who owns a good chunk of land that basically from the park's entrance, five miles eastward on both sides of the highway, they can make a quick buck tomorrow. If they sold the land to Marriott, Starbucks, KFC, they can make a quick buck. They're actually doing this with such thoughtfulness for the future of the entrance of Zion National Park in King County. It's mind-blowing, but people are saying, this is the most visionary project I've ever seen. So instead of whoring out the area to just become a typical gateway to a park, they've actually been reaccumulating parcels that were subdivided to make a profit on, reaccumulating that, putting it into a ranch, and then putting a conservation easement on it so it can't be developed like a normal entrance to a park. And then the numbers, so CRA isn't just for blighted, it's basically a mutual benefit, public and private, that can be accomplished without each other. And this project, when they ran the numbers with the lodge, I was shocked. The numbers were so high that it would produce for King County, and it was only at thirty percent occupancy. We've never had that low of an average ever in King County. So the numbers that they projected that it would come back into revenue over twenty years are much more conservative than what it's actually going to be barring some world war. Thirty-one million dollars for additional revenue for King County School District, nine-point-six million dollars for affordable housing projects, twenty-six-point-four million for King County Local Government, eighteen-eight, eighteen-point-eight million for the new East Zion Visitor Center, and twenty-seven million for public projects like new trails and other recreation opportunities. Isn't that an incredible opportunity for King County? That's the kind of development that we need. So I fully support it as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Usually I'm pretty boring. I happily attend every meeting and every training. I stay engaged for countless hours of budget hearings, block line adjustments, and ordinance revisions, so that when it really matters, I'm there. Strong for our families, strong for our livelihoods, strong for our God-given liberties, and in those crucial moments, I can be counted on. I've consistently, one-hundred percent, been willing to kindly fight with an understanding and a respect for law. The status quo have gone along, while those on the far left have actively tried to cancel and boycott King County people and businesses. And my defense of us has brought enemies to me on both sides, with only you and your vote standing between. Please let me keep fighting for you when it counts. Please vote for me this November. Thank you.
Thank you, Celeste. Camille?
Yes, thank you. I guess, you know, a lot of thoughts are kind of going through my head right now. I'm thinking of the constitutional principles, and I think of the number one principle of the Constitution, and that is power to the people. So I do have a lot of experience, but I may not have the answer to everything, but I don't have to, because we are a constitutional democratic republic. We elect people who represent us, and that's what I hope to do for you, is basically you can come to me and I can represent the voice of the people. I don't like the one-size-fits-all federal approach or one-size-fits-all state approach. Really, we have a lot of freedom to adjust things on a local level, and we have a really great diverse community. We may not always agree, but we can basically compromise and unite, and I feel like I've been able to do this in the tourism space, representing a pretty diverse thought or people in the spectrum, and I would like to continue to do that in this capacity. I'm not running for Camille Johnson. I could do a lot better career move than this, but I am running for King County. This is a way for me to give back. And I like, you know, I was talking to my brother last night, and we're parents and now we're grandparents, and your purest motives and intentions come through with your posture with your kids and your grandkids, and my daughter had to leave with her baby, but I desire great things for their future here in King County, and I desire great things for everybody's future here in King County, and that is why I'm running. I want to ask you guys to write my name on the ballot. Those will be coming out, I believe, apparently soon, and I would like to represent you. Thank you.
Well, so, it's been a great night. Really, I'm glad that we're able to be here in town with all you folks. I've spent a lot of time knocking on a lot of doors in this county in the last two months. I've been to every community except Bullfrog, but I've been in constant contact with those voters up there. Kind of surprised, you know, it's scary to go up and knock on somebody's door you don't know, but I've been welcomed, and what I'm talking about resonates with most everybody. We run a campaign based on honesty and integrity, and we've been a gentleman at all points along the way. We just have our concerns, and our concerns are for the taxpayers. For those of you who invested in properties, maybe to retire on, to raise your children on, I talked with people, one gentleman opened his windows for me to show his house of sixty years, and all he can see out of his back window is three-story condos. Those things resonate. Those are the issues that the people are interested in. This is a county commission election. Doesn't matter what party you are, we're not dealing with national, national issues here. I think if you read the paper today, you'll see that we say, the pothole doesn't care who throws the gravel in. Those are the things we're after. We're trying to make it right for us so we have our future picture the way we see it for our kids, and we protect our way of life. So, spending adventure, and I'm looking forward to election day. Thank you all for listening to me.
Thanks again for being here for coming. Couple of quick items. The county has no rescue nominee in East Zion. Don't lie, it's not a county issue. The county doesn't have any influence in Silla, or is my view, so we can't zone them. Sadly, they can't make their own rules. The county has no influence on use of water. A municipal order issue, that's this municipality, municipalities in the larger conservancies job. The county doesn't have a municipal streets department, nor will we. We're not going to get in the street business, that will be things that the developers need to take care of, infrastructure needs to be provided by them. The state determines which roads we maintain, and we are as busy as we can be keeping those county roads usable. Why am I running? I've thought seriously about failing on this thing. I'm here to defend my honor tonight. I'm here to defend my good name and correct the record on a character assassination. That's, better than I can speak through the primary. I didn't speak after reading the primary, I thought, oh, I'll take the high road, it'll be okay. Went through the caucus, eighty-two percent, this is all, this will be okay, we'll be all right, I can just lay low and take those accounts. I didn't speak, I didn't campaign. It continued, even after the primary, the attacks kept coming, and I thought, I just can't sit by and let it go. That was actually what motivated me to get back in the race. I run my, I've been here thirty years building my reputation and earning the respect of the citizens I serve. Why continue to fight? Just recently, my kids moved home. I have grandkids here, and it's heaven. Camille's kids moved home, she's got grandkids here. It's heaven. I'll fight to the death to protect the heritage, the values, the things, the reasons I want them to be able to have a life here. So the reason I moved here is my kids. I have no interest in this job other than protecting them. Thanks.
Thank you.